Located our business meeting this evening is in Sagatuck Township, all located at 3461 Blue Star Highway. Sagatuck, Michigan, 49453. The time is 6:02. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I don't know if we have anyone joining us by Zoom. But first, on our agenda, I will call the roll. Butler. Eileen. Brown. Helmerick. Webster. Work. Israel's here. And you are welcome to stand and join us to say the pledge of allegiance if you would like.
Let me just, if you apply, United States of America, Jewish Republic, what we should say, it's one issue. They're got, it is from, for the justice law.
Thank you. Next on the agenda this evening is approval of the agenda. Is there anything anyone would like to add to the agenda this evening? I have two items. All right. Under new business, item A, I would like to add resignation and appointment discussions. And under old business, I would like to add an item A. And that's just a quick update of bylaws and procedural document. And then, then the letters will follow under new business, okay? Is there any other additions or corrections to the agenda? Very much.
A little second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion pass. Number four, approval of the minutes. You all have your minutes. And thank you, I believe you did those, Daniel. It's really good to, you did that, all right. These are minutes from 7/25/2022. Is there any additions or any corrections on page one? Page two?
Yes, I think I have, oh, sorry.
We're there, page three.
On the, in the first paragraph, the third sentence, it starts with plans to do, I think it should be he plans to do most of the billing.
Page three?
Yes, right here, just right there. He plans.
Yeah, yes, go ahead on page three. Fourth paragraph, on the third line, it says cap the bottom and sides of well to prevent water leaky. That should be pond, not well. The next paragraph, third line, Velzma said he could rely, PC members, that should be relayed.
Anything else on the page, Jackie? John, did you have anything on that page?
She got it.
Okay. Page four. I have, a motion was made by Webster, at the end of that, it was unanimous, it wasn't, wasn't that a roll call vote? No, it was a voice vote? Okay, so we did voice, okay, that was my question.
I remember it being a voice one.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Any other comments on page four? Page five? And page six? Well, thank you. Is there a motion to open the minutes as a? Moved by Eileen, supported by.
Yeah, I'm thinking.
All right. So whoever, supported by, supported by ground. I'm all in favor? Motion passing, John. So moving on, the next order of business is public comment. In the planning commission request that speakers can have at least three minute limit for individual comments and five minute limit if you're speaking for a group. It's not a question and answer period, but we do really appreciate hearing from you. What we ask you to do is, could you come to the microphone, please state your name and your address for the record? So we can get that in the record, so is there anyone in the audience who would like to come to the mic? Would you like to address?
No, I'm fine, I just keep here to get familiar with the proceedings and procedure and stuff. I, I plan to eventually, but I have a meeting with Linay next Tuesday, not this Tuesday, but Tuesday after. Going to go over some stuff and then hopefully I'll be able to introduce my project to you after that.
Okay.
I don't want to get too far ahead of myself, which I'm guilty of doing.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to close the opportunity for public comment, unless there's anyone online? I'm sorry, is there anyone online who would like to say something?
This is the applicant.
Oh, so. That would be under new business.
Under new business, it's correct.
All right. So at this time, we'll close public comment. Moving on to old business, I'm just going to give you a quick update on the bylaws and the procedural document that we worked on. And Linay also then gave her input to that and suggested that we call it bylaws and procedural document. So it is now with our attorney, Ron Bolchee. And he's been in contact with me, so he has the document, he is looking at it. And he did say he would get back to me again this week on that, so he said it was an impressive document and that's about it. So when it comes back to me, what I thought I would do is turn it over to the secretary and Linay at that time. And I think that's probably most appropriate. But I, I told Ron I'd stay with that because I have all the corrections in the Ys and he has my contact information. And he did contact me this weekend, so I thought I'll stay with it if you don't mind. Yeah, okay, I was curious, did Ron, do we, is that adopted by the planning commission, it doesn't go to the board to just be? You know, according to the document, it's adopted by the planning commission. And that's in the document. But it, so it could go to the board. I, I think now that it has bylaws in it, maybe I'll just ask him. I will ask him that, when it was just procedural, it was fine to stay within the commission. It actually is a very nice training document too, so if you add new members. It, it really goes through a lot of questions that they might have on their first meeting, it helps to spell some of that. Well, I thought it was very helpful. Any questions on that? Okay. And now, a new business. New business this evening, item number A, is that as of August 10th, I formally am resigning as the chairperson of the Sagatuck Township Planning Commission. And sadly, I would say, yeah. But I want to say to you all, thank you for your dedication, your professionalism and your friendship over the years. And all the work that you've done, and I so appreciate the community and the fact that they, they all come in here to talk to us, right? We're such a welcoming group, but. But I do think they do, and I think that you set a very good tone here, so this evening, I am formally presenting this gavel to Dave Eileen, who was our vice chair. And I've never used it, Dave, but I've had people say to me, I use it all the time, I've never used it. Good luck. No, no, and now I'm done. It's all. I guess so.
Do you recognize me?
I'm done, you get to, Dave can recognize you.
Oh, right, Dave, thanks, thanks, yeah, this is John. As both your colleague on the planning commission and the board representative, I just want to thank you. That's, I guess, four years or so. You remain the only member of, well, you were the only member of the planning commission that served prior to the 2018 election, everyone else has since then. And we. We've been alive and really, it was. It was in everyone's interest to have your institution, so thank you for that. Aside that, if you don't know, you'll hear it later in the board report, it was my honor to swear you in as our new township board member.
I want, it's my honor to say hi to, so, I will.
I see more of you than I have.
I know, thank you.
Which is great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We wish you luck.
Thank you. Well, I'm so happy that I still get to be part of this community in another way, and so that's, that's the good. Right, thank you.
All right, once, once again, thank you, Becky.
Choked up, no.
It's a, it's a big, big chair to fill, so I will, I will do my best, so. I, but moving forward under, so the, the other thing that was added to new business was, I believe, a discussion of the three positions that are filled for the planning commission. Meaning chair, vice chair, and secretary?
I, I didn't hear that ahead, I thought the plan was to wait.
I think that's, she said resignation and appointance.
Oh, yeah, and appointance, yeah. So.
That's what I was told by comments.
So resignation is over. So the appointments night, I know, I believe what Becky had said was we were just going to discuss it, so. And I don't know, if we were, you know, are we in a position where we could elect people tonight if we?
Because you don't have a full board right now, I know that the township has, has posted the vacancy of the planning commission. And I believe that the board would be appointing someone in September, was just with the second Wednesday of September. So by the time we meet again, there will be another planning commissioner, I don't know if it, if you want to wait until you have your full table before you do that again. But then for now, or for now, you would just stay in vice chair until the calendar year when we do our regular cycle of elections, that's also.
I thought Becky had said that we were, that our regular cycle was over, I thought it was over in June. That's like, I was wondering if it was more pressing then.
I would have to go back for a minute, I, I don't recall when they had it on our agenda last, or whatever.
But at this point, I mean, I, I am comfortable with staying where we're at. And, and I would like everybody to consider, you know, a position, you know, if they so desire, we do need to fill. While there'll be, I mean, up for is all, all three positions really, chair, vice chair, and, and secretary, so. So please, between this meeting and next, we hopefully have our new planning commissioner appointed by the board. That you will know and, you know, be willing to step into a role. So take this time right from here and please, you know, think about it.
I'll review to see the, when our elections were this year, just to know when our annual cycle is. You can still reappoint or, you know, fill a vacancy. That, if you don't want to tonight, that's fine, but at your next meeting. I know that the township has also hired an administrative assistant who's going to be starting on Monday. And she will be taking minutes for the township board and the planning commission. I know we have this one where Denise, thank you so much for taking minutes.
However, I'm not taking no word for word.
But anyway, discussed appointment. But anyway, so as you're thinking about the secretary role, consider that, and then of course, there will be an item in September where the vice chair. If you're still vice chair at that point for that meeting, would it be able to share that conversation? Somebody will need to step in, that would be the secretary.
Cool.
Okay.
I'd like to encourage everyone to let people know we have an opening. And we have had some applicants already, but if you talk to someone who might be interested, make sure they submit their application. And more importantly, or as important, if they want to be considered, we much, the board prefers that applicants appear at the board meeting in September.
And is there a, is there a deadline for the application?
Is there a deadline then?
There is, I don't know off the top of my head, it's published though.
Okay.
Sometime between now and the first of September.
I, I believe it's the Friday before the board meeting, so.
Yeah, they, they always have the Friday, right.
Yeah.
So then, as you're discussing it with potential candidates, just let them know that there is a deadline and that they would need to get an application in. And then if you, you show up to the board meeting and you, and they would, they would say a few words generally. About what their credentials are, you know, any, what positive things they have to provide positions.
And field questions.
Field questions, which then gives the board the ability to make a good decision.
And if anyone is interested that's applied in the past, they only have to let us know that. They don't have to do it in that way. Keep this on file, if you're, just say, I want to be considered again.
The guy who applied meantime would be an awful lot of credentials, I'm surprised.
Yeah.
That would be, we do lucky.
You're returning to Gordon. Yeah. To September 9th.
I have his application, yeah.
Okay, good.
September 9th is the deadline.
Correct.
Yeah, September 9th. All right, so, and moving on to A, new business, no, I'm sorry, new business C.
Sure.
Is what I would call it, it's a public hearing, consideration of special approval use amendment application to expand the parking lot at the rear of the building and move the dumpster. The applicants is Jars Holding LLC, and they're operating marijuana provision center on parcel number 20-029-002-11. Also located at 2790 Blue Star. So at this time, I guess Linay.
Sure, I'll provide a brief overview, and then the applicant Lisa Doughty is here as well. Jars is an existing business, they have an approved special land use for medical marijuana provisioning as well as adult use retail. It was an adaptive reuse of that former hotel or cell building. They are open, and they've come to realize that they need to expand their parking because they have staff addition, more staff members than. And more customers than they had anticipated, as well as a security vehicle and a delivery vehicle. The parking spaces that are required by ordinance, based on the square footage of retail and their employee count would be between 17 and 18. At the time that they developed, the employee counts changed over these last couple of years, as well as the need for security and delivery because of COVID. The new plan with the additional parking area shows 22 spaces, the. We reviewed this according to the special land use standards as well as the standards for marijuana facilities or cannabis facilities. And. Overall, it meets our special land use standards, several of the standards aren't applicable because it is an existing business. And they've already been through the special use process for the use itself, it's just adding the parking. But what does stick out, I guess, is that I know that there are still some. Questions that the township engineer has related to the drainage. And so that would remain a condition of approval, that that would have to be worked out between the engineer and, and the applicant. The other things that we noted would be that the spaces themselves are, just the dimensions are one foot off from what our ordinance requires. We require 10 by 20, and they're showing a nine by 19 space, so that would need to be updated. The other piece is that the, and I included this in your plans, is that they have updated their landscaping and. I wanted, the plans that they submitted do not include the updated landscape plan. So I wanted to make sure that the updated landscape plan was A, part of the record, and B, updated to show if you do find that this special use could be approved to add the parking, that that be reflected in the new landscape plan. And we continue to see the opaque fencing, the vegetated buffer, and that the dumpster enclosure be relocated and that there's still being an enclosure. So those were some of the big things in terms of lighting, they're not showing any new lighting, but we did add a condition that should they want lighting, that then we would have to do administrative review of any updates to the lighting. So it was really the stormwater design, the, making sure that all our previous conditions, including the same 22nd landscape plan, become part of any approval or recommend, any approval you consider, that the parking lot spaces meet our ordinance standards. The comment about lighting, and then general conditions there related to state, local, and federal laws, that all the fees are paid, that they get all of their permits that are required. And this is a public hearing, so if there are other conditions or concerns of the public. And this is a public hearing, so if there are other conditions or concerns of the public. Uh, you know, those might be things that you add as conditions or other other concerns that you have as a planning commission. So that's what we have, um, with this. I I am not the engineer, so I'm really not. My lane is not, uh, the engineering side of things, but I did talk to Dana. And he does have some concerns about the size of the drainage basin and its proximity to the water table in terms of the depth of it. Um, and he is requiring in his letter that the, um, Allegan County Drain. Commission's office review the stormwater plan. That's what we have been doing for commercial development over the last couple of years. I don't. We didn't do that initially with jars because they actually, as I mentioned earlier, it's a rehabilitation of an existing business. They, when they came in to open initially, they reduced the impervious surface on the site, so they did not need to. Um, go to the drain commission office. Now with this additional asphalt and the parking addition, it does trigger that review. I'm happy to answer any other questions. Before you open it for a public hearing.
I just wonder if using the grass creep as opposed to solid paved asphalt might help. With, um, stormwater runoff. I mean, it does, you will get some absorption that might help.
We don't, um. I think that if you as a planning commission, if you in your motion, you've been offered that as a. Something that you would, uh, support. Whether that helps with their drainage calculations, it's not, it's not, uh, we we don't know right now. But you could, in your motion, include that that could be an option. Um, because I believe in our ordinance, we say that parking has to be a dust free surface and I think paved. Well, no. Don't think paved. Um. Let me look that up while we have the hearing, but.
I'll I'll wait until after the public hearing.
Um, are, they're allowed to use that if they want.
Okay.
So it would be up to them. You wouldn't have to do anything special to allow them to use it. We say that. All off-street driveway and parking shall be drained, prevent damage to abutting properties or streets. And shall be constructed of materials which are resistant to rutting and erosion. So the other solution for their drainage that Dana shared is using and connecting to MDOT has a drainage facility to the north. But they would have to get permission from MDOT. But it's also not up to us to come up with all, you know, we're just recognizing that there is a potential challenge.
So so leading all should would be subject to the applicant, um, getting appropriate approval. From either MDOT or, uh, the county valiant as is. Uh, as they choose their 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 method of getting rid of the waste of the stormwater.
Yes. I think what we're most, what we're looking at is the is that use of is parking there that use, you know, okay.
I have a question. Excuse me. Renee, can you direct us which? Plan sheets in front of us best would illustrate where the existing plan is and then where the new.
Oh, sure.
Is it C one or C two?
Okay, so C one shows the existing conditions.
Okay.
So in the, on the far right, you see that there are six spaces.
Okay.
And then in the kind of courtyard, you have four spaces, two of which are ADA accessible.
So that's the ten existing.
Yeah, and then the two left off to the side. There's, there's twelve existing.
Oh, it's twelve. Yeah, they want ten.
And then they want ten more. And so then, so that's what it is today, C one. And then as you. Go to two point oh.
Okay.
Everything kind of west of where that dumpster was on the south.
Yep.
Would be that additional, those additional ten.
All the additional there are.
Correct.
And I'm just curious, what's on the property now and with these faces?
So right now it is, uh, vegetated. So right now, if you go to. Um, sheet C one again.
Okay, yeah.
You can.
Oh, I see, yeah.
See that the dumpster and then there are three trees that would be removed.
And I'd see two, is that is the dumpster just moving along?
Correct, yep, the dumpster would just be traveling, yep, yep, to the far left with. Um, but it would still maintain the required setbacks.
Okay.
So the dumpster would not penetrate any of the required setbacks.
But obviously, those trees go away.
The trees go away, which is why I included this landscape plan, so you could see. That there's, well. In a sense, I mean.
It shows us they're there, but so we have a conflict. Because this this plan shows that those trees are there. It doesn't say remove, but the other plan says remove, so it's like, okay.
This is a plan from May.
Right, so therefore we don't have an updated landscape plan. We don't.
And that's why, that's, that's why I added that condition as well, that. Um, the app. Uh, the landscape.
Number two.
Mm-hmm.
And then to reiterate, you said that eighteen would be the requirement for the square footage of the.
Eighteen parking spaces would be the between seventeen and eighteen would be required for.
Seventeen and eighteen total.
Total. So, um.
So they're asking for two additional.
Right.
So we would have to allow that.
Four additional.
Four additional.
Four additional.
And I mean, I don't know if. If they only did eighteen, would those trees be able to remain?
Okay. Any other questions for Renee? All right. And we'll, uh, open up the public hearing now. Uh, there's, uh, one in the audience that would like to speak during, uh, for public hearing. Uh, we ask that you come up to the mic or come up front here and then, uh, state your name, your address. And you'll have three minutes, uh, for public comment or five if you're representing a group. Uh, so at this point, we opened it up for public comment, uh, so just that's first row. Second row. Is there anyone on Zoom?
No one but the applicants.
Yeah, so. Uh, so then seeing no one else, uh, at this point, we'll close the public comment. And now we'll open it up for, uh, the, uh, to the applicant, uh, to go over the project.
She cannot mute herself.
Oh, okay.
All right, I think I'm unmuted now. Um, so first of all, my apologies. I had this in my calendar at seven and not six o'clock. Um, I will only live about twenty-five minutes away and was headed out there. Um, but that's the silver lining of COVID, I guess, that with the Zoom option is now available. Um, so yes, as Renee stated, our original plans were to keep, you know. Kind of that outline of what was existing and parking at that, uh, site before. Um, a good problem to have is we are just a lot busier than we really anticipated the site to be. Um, so that requires more staff on site, um, which is really. Creating an issue with parking, you know, by the time we open, we don't even have, we have barely any spaces for customers. Um, so, you know, with the twenty spaces that we're asking for, I think with, um, I'll have to take the dimensions back to our engineer. So I think if we went down to the ten by twenty, um, that would bring us down to, um, that. Probably seven, well, probably less than seventeen, um, parking on site. And then originally we had such, we were trying to put through like a, a permeable asphalt. Um, as part of the plan and then our engineer changed it on us. I don't know why. Um, I think he thought with the drainage field, uh, that we could do a regular asphalt, but. Um, I know that he has been reviewing the engineer's comments, um, and I believe the plan is to do to. Do some new soil boring samples to figure out where that water table is. Um, and and really kind of. Hammer it down and and get all the details really, really finalized and everything there. So. The landscape, I talked to our contractor, you know, we've already installed all those landscaping, so we have to like. You know, as part of the excavation process, we are gonna have to pull some stuff up, but we, there is room there to put it back, so. Um, getting that landscape plan to show the parking is not gonna be an issue. It's just a matter of. Working with the engineer and the architect that put the landscape plan and and getting them to get their CAD images together and 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 marry all of that up, so. Um, it's pretty much the, uh. The plan for the project, if you have any questions for me.
So. Can open it up to the planning commissioner and for questions, uh.
I only have, I have, my comments are, is that I I think that, come on. As I looked at the information both from Renee and, uh, we have an engineer, I I think we have two concerns and I would, I would. Not, uh, want to approve this at this point because I think there is a lot of things missing. That we should have as a planning commission to ensure that our ordinance and that that, that we don't, um. That Renee doesn't look at, um, plans and and make sure that everything is appropriate, but. We as a planning commission do not have that in front of us. So therefore, you know, the stormwater, if that's a big issue, I think we need to get that clear. Uh, what type of surface that they're going to put on the source of the stormwater and what the landscape plan is. Because that is, that's a huge change from what they have presented before. So I, I really am struggling with. Uh, approving it at at the information that I have right in front of me because it's incomplete. Close my.
I agree.
Anyone else? I guess what I would, I would like to reiterate some of what Denise said and and kudos to you for needing the additional parking. I think that's, uh, great that your business is doing as well as this. And, uh, we hope that, you know, you get to that point to be able to accommodate all that, but I tend to agree that I, I'm a little concerned with. I I don't know if. The engineer is going, like, if everything is going to be approved based on, you know, the comments that the engineer has said, just due to the high water level table. And are you gonna be able to pro- provide the additional, uh, you know, the additional detention? Uh, because of your increased impervious surface. Uh, so it's all, all seems like that's a little bit up in the air. Uh, regarding that. I, I mean, I, I think it's an interesting idea and I don't know. Uh, how it will change, but, uh, if you did do something and it even sounded like you might be. Open to it, uh, to do something like a grass creep where it's, it's more of a, it's less, less impervious, uh, than, uh, than asphalt is. And maybe that'll, yeah, maybe that'll help and hopefully it does. I agree that it sounds like, uh, if you revise the, uh, the parking lot, uh, to meet the. The parking lot space sizes that are spelled out in our ordinance, then the parking lot. Count is going to change or the space number is going to change. So it would be nice to have that in front of us as well. Uh. And I, so based on those comments, I guess, I also would agree that I, I feel like there should be some, uh. We need some clarification, some revisions to the plan, some updated plans prior to feeling comfortable to. Uh, just voting it, uh, you know, passing it based on, uh, based on, you know, having conditions. Uh, so. I guess that's, that's kind of how I feel.
So the, my only concern was there was no lighting in the additional parking. And the the nature of the product, uh, we had all concerned about patrons who are going there. Purchasing this and making it back to a car, that right now at nine o'clock, it's still light. We know by October, November, December, uh, it's gonna be pitch black. Um. When people are still going in and out. I don't think this is a high crime area, but by the same token, that was mildly concerned. It shouldn't be think about lighting. Just to make sure that there's a security for people who are pre-putting a place that has a great problem. I need more parking. It's wonderful.
Right. Is there lighting on the building?
There is, yeah. We had some, um, pretty detailed conversations with them when they first opened because some of the lighting that was installed. Did not match the plan, so we went through that, but then they made adjustments. Some of the fixtures were tilted and so we had them change the angle. Um, and then remove even one of the lights that was, um, added but not on the plan, so, um. Yeah, so there is lighting and there is building lighting, but it's all downward facing.
And the parking spaces that are that are being added, those are for employees, if I understand correctly.
Yes.
Uh. Any other comments? Nope.
Okay. Um, not really. I just wonder about the additional spaces over the eighteen. You'll, you'll only lose one spot by making the others on that side ten feet wide. So you would be four, you'd be three over what the ordinance is.
And our ordinance allows a thirty percent over the required, so.
It does, okay.
So we would be within that.
All right.
So if they go down for twenty-two and twenty-one, it's still not previous. So number wise, they're fine.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have another comment on the parking space size issue. Um, as you know, we've started the ordinance review process. With three advisory committees, and I think a couple of committees, one of the points that was requested that be consulted investigating. For more thoroughly, of course, is maybe considering smaller parking space requirements. And I just bring that up because we may be dealing with this issue, with this project before he's completed his view. But it'd be helpful to get maybe some feedback if we decided to allow, in this case.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that the timing would necessarily line up, but it would be good to hear from him. I I know that some. Communities allow for, say, fifty percent of the required spaces to be smaller for, um, smaller. And labeled for smaller vehicle. But I, I believe that every year or two parking lots are typically restripped or, you know, resurfaced and. If we do happen to change the dimension, then they could always restripe it.
And it would be something that if we decided as a commission of your own, they would have smaller pitch spaces, is that something that we? For because it's the current ordinance to be.
See. I mean, we, we have a, a. A phrase in here that says the planning commission shall determine the adequacy of off-street. Loading facilities and spaces, so I think that's just loading. Um. I'm not familiar with anything that says. It just says each motor vehicle parking space shall be not less than two hundred square feet or less than ten feet wide. Exclusive of driveway.
I would think that if in fact, that as a planning commission, we probably could, but if they didn't have, let's say. I would think that if in fact, as a planning commission, we probably couldn't, but if they didn't have, let's say they didn't have enough space, wouldn't that be a variance? They would then have to add to the variance in order for them to, let's say they didn't have that, and they say, I want that many spaces, but I have to reduce my parking size, well, that's a variance, is it not?
That would be a dimensional variance if they wanted a smaller, some ordinances might say, or the planning commission could approve a smaller size, I'm not seeing that here. So, yeah, for now, it is 200 square feet. And minimum 10 feet wide. So that's how they said.
And then question the applicant, how, how far out you believe you are as far as like with the engineering questions and resolution without dealing with the county or potentially the MDOT uh, for that drainage? Do you have any grasp of what kind of timeframe or you're, you're thinking of?
Uh, my engineer told me today that he expects to have something to me back by Wednesday. Based on, uh, Mr. Bird's engineering comments.
Okay.
So really, you know, from our perspective, um, parking is a great issue to have. Uh, lots of concerns, obviously, with winter coming. So we're really, we're, we're trying to quote unquote, be, we're, we're trying to beat the freeze and do everything at once to get approval, you know, start the permitting process. Once we kind of get all of those engineering things in queue, and just so that way, once we get that approval, we can pull permits and, and go. Because the, you know, if we wait for this and then we go and do this next step, we could be in springtime at that point. And, um, so that, you, you know, when, when we originally brought this to our engineer mid-June, he didn't think it would be an issue, but as we're kind of coming into this, and we're kind of seeing some more of the comments, from the township engineering standpoint, uh, it's become a little bit more finicky than we had originally anticipated.
Linay, if, if, uh, let's say this, this kind of, but they weren't able to get the asphalt in prior to whenever the asphalt lands closed. So November 1st or 15th, maybe. Uh, when, is there a process that the township has where they, they could get, uh, temporary permit for, you know, or for lack of a better term, but like if they had stone down, it's going to be able to park on the stone until spring?
Yeah, I don't think we have anything that would forbid that, other than an approved grading and drainage plan.
Okay.
It would just make it harder for them, because then now you're trying to plow gravel.
And the dumpster is there.
Yeah.
Right.
And if I could make a comment on that, one of the, um, that was actually what my contractor suggested. And I, I hit back with, there's a lot of concerns with plowing, icing over, and then a lot of workers comp claims if one of our employees slips and falls. So from a business perspective, um, it is something we would be open to, but, uh, it's not the ideal situation.
Well, just thinking things through, I I wonder what commissioners would think about approving the, the use of additional parking, but requiring them to come back with the landscape plan and a drainage plan.
Before it begins.
Yeah, before, uh, they got it, I, I, I don't know, I don't know if that does anything.
Probably not. I would be in favor of it, I, I think the biggest thing is the stormwater, and I think we have to work with the drainage, uh, and, and they need to know exactly what they're doing. And, uh, and if, if we're concerned with rural character and the tree preservation, I think the landscape plan and, and is really key, we've talked about that many times. I, and I, I feel for them, but at the same time, I, I think it's our job as a planning commission to uh, look at the ordinances and what applicants provide us, and if it's not complete, uh, I, and if we got some real major concerns, I think it'd be us not to approve it. Or postpone it for the applicant, but until we have more accurate information that we feel that, and that we can remove some of these conditions.
Well, the biggest condition they have is the fact that they have to have a soil boring, and you have to have the county approval, which isn't really us. Um, the part that concerns us is we don't have the, um, new landscape design, but the real, the harder part will be, where is this water going? The county are going to take care of it, which is, I mean, we could approve it subject to that, but that doesn't get her any closer, because, um,
How long's it take to get the, uh, the drainage?
Do you have any idea, if you have any idea what the, what you're saying, it will, how long it'll take to get into, uh, the approval from the county?
I don't, I don't have that, I think, uh, once we get approval from the township, we can submit the permits to the county. And kind of go from there, but I think, um, from my understanding, is that once, um, the township approves the drainage, that it should, like, I mean, I, I've seen Mr. Bird's comments on a lot of stuff, he's very thorough. So I know that whatever he approves at the township level, it should be able to easily pass through at the, the county level. Um, he is very, very thorough in his review process.
Well, I'll, I'll pass your kind words along to him, um, but I, does, and I, I've not built anything in, in this area, but I would think, couldn't they go to the county and ask this to fly? Because, um, otherwise we're dumping it, we're going to approve it subject to that, and then it'd be dumping on Linay to make the final decision. Um, which doesn't seem fair, that, what, what we're talking to. By the same token, if you're, if you have to do that, and it's going to take a month, um, we're not costing you any time if we table this, because that gives you a month to get your approval from the county. And in the meantime, you can get the landscape plan, which will fill out our file, and we won't have to try to approve it with conditions that Linay has to babysit, um, along the way.
Yeah, I mean, we, since we don't have to notice it, it's not that they, we'd have to have it in, but today was the deadline for the September meeting, but there's grace period there, because it's just an update, I, so.
Well, they're expecting more from their engineer by this Wednesday.
They are.
And we are helping to address all these concerns, but hopefully it will address many of them.
But there are actually comments from the county engineer, correct?
No, uh, Prime Minister Newhop is also the engineer for the Alocken County Drain Commission. These are comments from Dana, who works for the township, it's a different person who does the county reviews, but same for.
Okay, and who's the engineer for the applicant?
Um, your engineer's name.
Um, Iden Calabot from Calabot Engineering.
Okay, just, but that's who you're getting more information from this Wednesday, correct?
Yes, yes.
So I, I don't, I, I think tabling it won't hurt you, because you're not going to be able to put a shovel in the ground for at least a month, because you have to get this county approval and/or MDOT approval. If you can do that in a month, I will be impressed. And so, uh, I think we should table this.
Okay, I think we need to be very clear regarding the tabling versus postponing. We want postponed, because tabling would be, you'd have, you'd have to come back next month, and we'd have to take it off the table.
Alright, so, I meant to say postponed, didn't I?
Yes.
I, I postponed this to help the applicant out.
So, good.
The office commission evidently saw us standing.
I'm, uh, due to all the application pending the applicant obtaining some of the items, or the items indicated in the recommendations from the plan.
Being the landscape, an updated landscape plan, and a, uh, drainage plan.
And, and the, the updated number of cars pursuant to complying with 10 by 20 requirements.
Is there a second? Second. Okay, so there's motion on the table, anyone else have any discussion at this point? Questions? I'm hearing any, and I will, at this point, I'll put it up to a vote. Uh, so we can say, uh, say Butler?
Yes.
Webster?
Yes.
Uh, Work? Brown?
Yes.
Helmer?
Oh, yes.
Eily?
Yes.
So the motion to postpone, uh, the, uh, the, uh, this, uh,
Special.
Yeah.
I got it.
Okay. So the special, some amendments, uh, is, uh, has been postponed. So, thank you, and hope to see you next week or next month.
Alright, thank you, I appreciate it.
Welcome.
Bye.
Okay, so moving on to, uh, township board update.
Sure.
Mr. Helmer?
Township board met on August 10th of this month, and it's a very kind of quiet, uneventful morning, but I'll share what happened with you anyway. Uh, we had public commentary, county commission cap ago, we gave an update on the issue. Primary to, for reelection to a new county district, a district, rematch of. Uh, we had a really interesting and thorough presentation. Tim Travis, who's the head of the Sagata Public Schools Board, uh, he showed us, he's the superintendent, he showed a video, he gave statistics of performance of the students and COVID-related things in it. So it was very interesting, and as I said, it was very thorough, including the financial overview, it seemed to be pretty set up in that front. And then we, uh, had to vote on a board resignation. Supervisor Cindy Osmond had submitted a letter of resignation to the board, which we approved. And then we voted to move Clerk Abby Bigford into the supervisor's position. Planning Commission Chair Becky Israel was then nominated and approved to replace Clerk Bigford as the Township Board Clerk. So that, that's what happened. And then we, um, we made some appointments, we reappointed Judith Schneider to the interurban board to represent the township. A newcomer to our appointment process who had applied before, Chris Cowling, was named an alternate to the zoning board of appeals. And, uh, we were very pleased, because for just those two positions, we had five applicants. It's always nice to have a talented pool for us. Moving forward, we voted to approve an appointment agreement between the township and Cindy Osmond, our former supervisor, who will now be, and actually is already is now, our official building official slash assisting, assistant zoning administrator. It's a full-time position, she started last week, and personally, I think she's fabulous, and it's great to have her in that position, full-time to bolster that, those duties of the township. Uh, we also approved, this is pretty exciting, who goes to KENS, so the Parks Commission? But there will be the first ever, and I think it's the first ever of the township, a millage in November for Parks. We had approved a resolution to put that up in the ballot, we'll be hearing more, a lot more about those plans in the future. Uh, we approved a wa, a water service line replacement at North of Elizabeth for a house that had issued getting water eastward under their house. Um, and there was a proposed settlement, my guys might remember back in when we met during the Zoom days. Uh, the Forger property, which was running an alleged, uh, unallowed trucking service over the county township. And, um, didn't always comply with notices that we made. So apparently they've accepted the settlement to move forward in a manner that's legal, following Sarah Ordinance. And then we appointed me and Brenda Marcy, who are going to do a, a six-month review of manager DeFranco, and help set goals for the next six months. And then we, we went into a closed session with two attorneys to discuss updates on legal issues. When we came out in closed session, and adjourned the meeting. There you have it.
Thank you. Stay up.
That was really just to let you know that, um, a, a new administrative assistant will be starting up on the weekend. And I already shared that, so it's already old news, but Morgan will be taking minutes for the planning commission and the township board, and hoping with packets and, um, you know, a lot of the things that John Perfect has done, and working closely with Cindy.
Who is that?
Morgan.
Morgan?
Morgan, I don't know Morgan's last name. Aaron.
Morgan Aaron.
How you spell, how you spell that?
A R E N S. A pen and a pen.
And, um, Linay, we, even though, um, do we have to make anything in the amendments in regards to the Dollar General in regards to their withdrawal? We have, it's just making note, do we have to do anything more official, or it's just, it's just?
I mean, I officially, I, I scanned and printed the, um, the email and put it in the file. And it's all withdrawn on it. It might be good just to add that under staff update, that Dollar General will prove themselves.
Okay.
Via email, uh, eight, twenty-two, twenty-two.
Just because that was a postponement.
It was, it was postponed.
So that just clears up our minute by the same.
By the way, closed. It's good.
Uh, they did not say why.
Very update on the, uh, on the office. Remap?
Do you want it?
Jack, you're, you're on that committee, right? I am. Uh, the plans are in progress and getting closer and closer to being 100% finalized. And while that's happening, he is already creating a set of construction documents and trying to keep up with the project schedule. So we, it still is on schedule, there are some design issues that need to be tightened up. And I'll have some suggestions this week, some sketches to the team. And we meet again Friday. And furniture needs to be, you need to, are you already engaged with the furniture company?
Yep, so, so he received all of the, um, all the designs, all the design layouts from, uh, Alba March, the design firm. Um, and then he'll be getting back in touch with us, best way to proceed, whether he comes here and walks through everything with us, or whether we go out and we meet him at show. So where we would be working with MOE.
So is your main contact now at MOE the same one that started working with us way back in the early days?
That is correct.
Okay. Um, the budget's not finalized yet, because there have been planned changes. So we still need to receive a final budget for the plan.
Prefer it.
Furniture and some architectural changes. Yeah.
I have a, a motion to adjourn.
Slow.
I'll support. Alright, so, by, by Butler and supported by Helmer. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, the show is.
What do you matter?
Yeah.
The boat gone. You rather tighten. One hour.
Okay.